They don't look at what's at issue. It's not an issue of governor's authority. Who said last year that I'll let this independent school district decide what they want to do?
That's time, sir.
And then now suddenly he has this authority to do what schools should do.
That's time. Thank you. James Webb.
Hi, I'm a nurse. I take care of, I'm a director of nurses. Take care of approximately 140 to 150 clients. I'm absolutely appalled and ashamed of all so far, all the healthcare workers that have come up here. And none of them has spit any facts. Everybody's just talking in generalities. Not a single person's put the science out there. Does anybody in this room have an N95 mask on? No. One healthcare worker come up here with two? Okay, very good. Because if you're not wearing an N95 mask, you're not going to filter out the particle. The coronavirus is 0.12. I'm not going to get into all the science behind it. Micro nanometers, whatever. The N95 can protect down to 0.1. Any other mask you have does not protect you. I've seen clients, I've seen family, friends, plenty of people wear their mask religiously in a state of fear and they still get COVID. It does not protect them. Not to mention everything else that's been said here tonight about our freedoms and everything else. Also, the own, our own Taylor County Health Department, no kids in Taylor County
That's time.
has died of the coronavirus.
Joanna Frick.
Good evening. My husband and I have six children. The last two are at Madison Middle School. My husband is a healthcare provider here in Abilene. First of all, I want to say that the kids have a choice right now during the school. If you sit in front of Madison Middle School, probably less than 10% of the kids wear a mask every single day. They have a choice. They choose not to. Forcing them to chew, forcing them to wear a mask is causing what you have here today, which is the parents voicing their opinion for their children. I'm the parent, you're not. I get to decide, you don't. The children are not the ones that are being severely affected by COVID, whether it is the Delta variant or the original variant that came out. Most of the children that are ending up sick and in the hospital have comorbidities that are causing the disruption with the virus. You guys need to consider our rights as parents and taxpayers.
Alexandria De La Cruz.
Hello. So my son is a first grader at Taylor Elementary. I pulled him out for the last two months of school last year after the school board came and said that they were going to keep the mask mandate. So I went ahead and pulled my son out. He was fine with it. He is so happy to be back at school, seeing all his friends, all the faces, all the smiles. Please don't make him go back. I will pull him back out of school and he doesn't want to. He wants to stay at school. But I will not jeopardize his health for fun with friends. And, and all these doctors, there's multiple doctors that say other things also. I mean, they can say their science, but there's also plenty that are not here today that have their reasons. And there's just so much more. What, our freedom to choose, that is what it's about. We have the right to choose. The teachers, they've all been vaccinated. The ones that want to be vaccinated are vaccinated. The ones that want to wear masks, wear masks. Let us breathe. Let our kids choose. Let us have the right to choose. Thank you.
I have six or seven left. And I want to say thank you to those that have shared and come up and adjusted what you've probably been planning for a week. And I apologize that we had to do that, but in order to get through and to get to hear everyone, which I think is the most important, that we're getting to hear everyone. So with that, Elizabeth Smizer, you're next.
I was asked to read this letter by a friend who is a wife, mother of kids in Abilene ISD and in Wiley ISD, a community member and AIS employee and a friend. Our kids need to be in school. It's what's best for them for their well-being and for their mental health too. But in order to keep our kids in the classroom and prevent another school shutdown, we must do all we can to keep schools open and our kids safe right now with masks in the classroom. Many talk about rights and freedoms, but mention very little about our responsibilities. This crisis is not the time to fight or argue. If we can help slow the spread of this disease and by something as simple as masking, it will help the doctors to be able to serve our community and we can help prevent many unnecessary deaths or further suffering. We need to come together to do the right thing despite our differences, our unsupported medical opinions, or unjust laws. We need to listen to the experts caring for our children and your children. I am listening and doing my part. Will you listen and do yours? Thank you.
Connie Robinette.
Hello. Hello. I emailed you an article last week that was published recently in the New York Magazine and refers to some of the CDC's info and other studies. And it concludes that masks have not been shown to be effective. More children die seasonally from the flu than have died from COVID, but we've never masked during the flu season. Thankfully, child flu deaths and COVID children deaths are statistically zero. Thank goodness. Science, that's one thing. But if we begin to make health decisions and mandates for others based on our feelings or fears instead of basing them on science, then we've crossed a line. Lastly, the Texas Supreme Court ruled on Thursday in favor of Governor Abbott backing up the parents' right to decide whether to mask or not. So it does seem not wise to possibly have to waste time or money in litigation if that would...
...the Journal of Medicine, which is the number one journal, medical journal in the world, dated May 21st, 2020. I'm not going to have time to go through all of it, but some quotes out of that article. "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection. Focusing on universal masking alone may paradoxically lead to more transmission of COVID-19 if it diverts from attention of implementing more fundamental infection control measures, such as hand washing, which is much more effective. It's also clear that masks serve symbolic roles. One might argue that fear and anxiety are better countered with data and education than with a marginal beneficial mask. Unless you're wearing an N95 mask, you're not doing anything. You're actually probably harboring more bacteria from the droplets."
Diana Luna.
Hello. The only thing I'm going to say is because there are so many unmasked people here today, I encourage everybody to change... Make sure you take a shower because this is kind of disgusting. And I actually already pulled my children from AISD. I'm part of a very large mom group parent town. And I'm actually encouraging them to pull their children as well until we can get their children under control because it really seems like, you're right. I have pulled my children. And when we are back in green, I will allow them to go back to school. But I'm homeschooling. So just so you know, that's what I'm encouraging people to do.
Thank you, Diane. John Thacker.
I would say this topic has been well covered.
You're good. You're welcome. Thank you. Sammy Garcia.
Just a couple of things. First of all, doctors generally are not political people. And for them to get up and express themselves, it takes a lot of guts. Because, and you know what? That's who I'm listening to. I know some of these other folks that have spoke against this and they're not talking about preventing... Okay? The board, this is your responsibility. And what she just said is because, oh yeah, everybody's against it, everybody's talking against it, so you're probably not going to. You better think twice. Let me tell you why. David Young is responsible for the kids in this district. His decision-making process is a lot different than every single individual parent. Because when these kids start getting sick, when they start in the hospital, when they die, it's going to be him that's going to, everybody's going to point at. It's going to be this board that's going to do that. So you better think about your responsibility. Prevent the spread, please. Put in the mask. Thank you.
That's time. Thanks. Thank you, Steve. All right. Our last one is Jan Morrison.
I sent a version of this letter to the trustees this week, so I apologize for the redundancy, but I'll read it for everybody else. My son is in third grade this year at Austin Elementary. I want him to participate in extracurriculars and spend time with his friends and aftercare, but he won't be able to do any of that if schools shut down like they did during the 1920 school year. He hates wearing a mask, but he also hates sitting in the backseat, which is mandated by law. And he hated being strapped into a car seat when he was little. He screamed every time, also mandated by law. But those steps are required to keep him safe, no matter how safe I thought my driving was. I listen to doctors when my child has an ear infection or pink eye and I feel like this situation is no different. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I want to just say thank you. Job well done, citizens of Abilene. And I appreciate your input. All those that have sent emails, letters to the board, thank you for your input. It's always welcome, no matter the topic. At this time, I want to kind of just make a natural break. If you need to step out, you're more than welcome to. We invite you to stay if you'd like. We're going to have discussion on this topic. If you'd like to stay, and this is our opportunity to have a chance to speak. You guys have had yours or have ours. I would just kind of, I would kind of just give a minute to kind of just let everybody, no pun intended, breathe and do what you need to do. And if you need to step away, know that you can do that. I'd like to ask everyone to, if you're going to stay, go ahead and find your seat. All right, we're going to go ahead and start our meeting again. If I could, have everyone's attention. Thank you. Whoever had the... Very nice. Thank you. Because of all the interest shown here tonight regarding the masking, face covering protocols, we're going to take this opportunity to move up Agenda Item 3E, which is kind of our chance to discuss. And so we will now move to Item E, masking, face covering protocols. I would like to call on Dr. Gustavo Villanueva, Associate Superintendent for Leadership and Student Services, to share some information with us tonight.
Good evening. Board docs, you have a document that tells you and gives you some data that I think it was important for the board to consider, that we think the board should consider as we discuss this topic. And at that time, we mentioned that 37 new positive COVID cases had been reported in the school district. Twenty seven, 20 of these were students and 17 were staff members, eight of which were our bus drivers. And there was a total of 138 cases. And at that time, those numbers were significant. And it was a reason for us to say to the board, it is a good conversation for us to have. You also have received today, and you're, in front of you should be a document with additional data of where our numbers are currently. Today, we had a total of 62 cases and we currently have 194 cases that are active in Abilene ISD. It's 78 that have become inactive, so a total of 272 cases up to this point. And you have the breakdown of students and staff. Today was the eighth day of instruction this year in the AISD and we have had 194 cases. And last year on the eighth day of school, we had seven active cases. So there's no doubt a significant difference. Last year, we only had two days during the school year in which we recorded more than 25 cases in a single day. Twenty nine, the 29th of, 29 on November 16 and 26 on December 4. In just eight days of school this year, we have topped that four times. So we have certainly exceeded that. The ISD topped 200 total cases last Friday, August 27th, with 209 just after seven days of school. We did not top that last year until after November or until November 2nd. Last year during the entire school year, we recorded 152 cases among students in our elementary schools, Long Early Learning Center in Crockett Head Sartre. Through eight days this year, we have already recorded 73 positive cases among that same group. Those are, one of the things and one of the places we stand as an administration is to deal with all of disinformation and the realities that those could result in. Some of the... It could be very likely that the current rate of increased COVID-19 cases will have to, that we have maybe looking at additional reduction in bus routes. We had to do that some. The closure of some classrooms. As a matter of fact, today, we announced the first closed classroom in one of our campuses in our district because of a large number of positive students. We have four classrooms that are currently under quarantine, is what we call them. And so we keep them from moving throughout the day in an effort to try to keep the classroom open and exposing other students. So there's certainly a challenge when numbers are increasing and when the regulations that are coming, in some cases even, are mixed messages that we have to deal with. And at some point, we have to answer the question of when do we keep a classroom open? When do we keep a school open or not and so forth? So at that rate, we... Directions. As a matter of fact, today, we closed one. The inability to mask greatly increases the risk of exposure and the number of students designated as close contacts. While parents have choice, again, that's a mixed message to send their student to school if they're a close contact. That increase, that allows them to be in school, but increases exposure. And we cannot limit that. That is, that is not an option for us. Students whose parents choose to quarantine this year do not have access to remote learning. And therefore, if they want to keep their students at school, you not have access to that learning. When we sent this board doc to you, our recommendation was based off of the fact that TA guidance stated that mask provisions of G38 are not, were not being enforced at the time. And as a result of ongoing litigation, that they would not until that was clarified and then they would provide further guidance. Based on the fact that that litigation is, that that's continuously changing and from guidance that we received today, it's probably not, at this point, a, the recommendation of this administration to do that. However, it is an important conversation for us to have about the realities, regardless of whether it's masks or not. At some point, the question is going to be, do we keep our schools open or not? And I think that's a valuable conversation to have. I've given you some of the data as you have before you for you to have this conversation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Do you have any other school districts' numbers? I know what...
Midland started before us, I guess, and they had quite a few cases. Are they, you know, they're still reporting higher numbers or...
The districts that I've looked at at least, and it's a cursory look. I don't have any specific information on them. In general, if they're masked, the numbers are a lot lower. If they're not masked, the numbers are a little bit higher.
Rodney, I have a news article from, it was from Friday, I believe, about Midland ISD's cases. More than 1,000 students and staff test positive for COVID since the beginning of the school year. So that's not... But to that point in the school year, which for them would have been like three and a half weeks in. They're two weeks ahead of us. We were a week and a half on Friday. So they've had 1,000 total, but not necessarily 1,000 active.
The classroom that you mentioned that is going to have to be closed? Did I understand that correctly?
Correct.
How long will that be for?
Be closed for 10 days.
10 school days?
10, no, 10 total days.
10 total days?
Weekends count in this case.
Weekends, okay.
And we have a holiday.
And yes, my goodness, we have a one-day holiday.
So you mentioned, you mentioned our legal assistance, some of the comments. And Dr. Young, you just passed this to us. There's seven or eight pages. Do you have anything that you can kind of just pull out of that that you are aware of? So I know that we've been talking to our legal counsel at least twice or three times before lunch today. And so you want to kind of give an update on where we're at with that?
I sent you last night a status report from our attorney about all of the statewide litigation. And at that time, she pointed out that there were still some court documents that were not available on the weekend that she needed to read to finalize that. It looked as if one of the cases in, coming out of Travis County... Generalizability. That is, when you actually read that order from the Travis County, it only includes the districts that were in that lawsuit. The group of districts or districts in Travis County. And so it is just limited to those. And so there is, her guidance is that there is not, that local school boards do not at this time have the ability to make a mask requirement even while this is playing, playing out in the court system. That's different. That changed significantly last Thursday afternoon. As you know, as Dr. Villanueva mentioned, our initial recommendation was that because of the current state of the litigation, that that was an option that you could consider. And that's why we put this item on the agenda tonight. But that, that has changed since then. And so with that as the current, current state, there are still, I think the Supreme Court has made their position clear about how they will handle this when cases ultimately make their way to the Texas Supreme Court. But that is, that's in process for some cases still, but those are all specific to specific counties or school districts. She also mentioned the Fort Worth case where the district did choose to impose a mask mandate when allowable by law, which is an opportunity that in the, in the event, that could be a fast acting thing if that were to change. So certainly that is not allowable by law right now. And so it would not be in effect. So that's, this has changed some from what I sent you last night. The bold letters are things that she has added since then. But had the opportunity to share with each of you on the phone today, one at a time, just the update there. And this is just the written update to go along with that conversation.
May I add an additional piece of information that I didn't give you? And it's significant because we took the time to create a survey, to send out to staff and to our parents. I just want to give you the, you have that information also at the bottom of your sheet. Just a general quick glance at this. We collected 1,394 responses from AISD staff, with 739 of them were 53% asking for a mask requirement and 655 of them, 47% asking that masks not be required. The parent number, depending on how you break down it, you've got an explanation in that second bullet at the bottom of that. But in general, it's between 63 to 68% of the parent responses are for a mask requirement and 32 to 34% are against the mask requirement.
I guess I've got a question. You probably can't answer this, but when you go to campus, there's very few staff, very few students are wearing masks. So survey results are this. Why are not more staff and students wearing masks?
I would like to ask if we could, just to kind of, I know, I know this isn't emotional, but this will allow us to kind of have some good discussion and not have the emotion that we're having to deal with. So if you guys would, just please, whether either side, if you hear something you don't like, just kind of sit on it. We appreciate that. So question, I also had a question on our, on our faculty and staff, on the survey. Did they, were they... Were the surveys, I thought there were...
They had to.
Thanks, y'all. We'll handle the questions that the board asks. I appreciate this. But we did, they had to be logged in with their Google ISD, their Abilene ISD Google account to control the... We stripped all that data off before looking at the results, but wanted to be sure that we had good data. So people only had the opportunity to take the survey one time. On the parent version of the survey, and this is the reason for the variation... There was an opportunity for, once validating that they were a parent of an AISD student. For example, a parent that had one student in the district got to respond one time, whereas a parent with three students, we would apply that result three times. And so that's, that's where the... And so that's, that's where the, the range that he mentioned comes from, not, not just from variability in the data.
Did we have a breakdown of age of student and from the parents? You know, did it change? If they had an elementary, middle school, high school, if they were that spread out, would we know?
Our, our purpose in collecting that data was solely to validate that they were AISD parents. We stripped all that data off in order to, we want people to feel comfortable taking the survey. We have to know we have good data, but we did not do anything with that data just for that reason.
My fellow board members, this is an opportunity for, to ask questions to Dr. Villanueva, Dr. Young, to ourselves. So I encourage you to speak up.
I have a thought. Do students in AISD have a right for clean air? I think this is essential, that our children all have a right to clean air. We have parents that send their children to school when they're sick, when they have a cold, when they have the flu, they have a fever, because they don't have anywhere else to put them. So they bring them to us and infect our kids that are healthy. This is the same way I'm looking at masks. It doesn't make any difference. We have to protect these children, whether they belong to me or belong to you. It doesn't make any difference to me. My children, both of them, all three of them have masks and they wear a date. And I want my kids to have clean air when they go to school. Because you know what? The law requires them to go to school. They don't go because they want to. They go because if they don't, the parents want to stop. So we
I've got a question. Have you and the, Dr. Young, have y'all looked at any incentives for staff or students that are 12 years or older, some incentives maybe for getting vaccinated? Because my employer had incentives and I'm, I'm assuming other employers have incentives for getting vaccinated. So has that been done? And, you know, when we had community comments a while ago, we sat here and listened and now it's our time as a board to, to discuss and we ask the same, be extended to us to discuss these issues. I'm just throwing out a lot of things tonight. Some of y'all are going to like what's said and others aren't. But yeah, is there any, from a faculty standpoint, is there, have any incentives been discussed about being vaccinated?
There has been no discussion of that. I don't believe that that's something that we could do as a, as a school district. We have not, we have, our first and foremost goal was to make sure that every employee that had, that wanted to be vaccinated had the opportunity to be vaccinated. And, and we were able to accomplish that last spring. We don't know how, what percentage of our employees have been vaccinated because we're, that's not a question that we can ask. And so that would extend to not having the conversation about incentives. But I think the opportunity is a very important thing.
Joe, I see the struggle that we have is not so much about masks, to put them on or to take them off. It's about, don't tell me what to do. I think that's what it comes down to. I don't want anybody telling me and my family how to run their, their accounts. I'm a product of the polio vaccine and many of you here are also. And if you didn't kill any of us, I'm still here. I'm a product of the measles, smallpox, all of that stuff, the vaccines. We're used to prevent that from killing us all. And this vaccine that we have now is, is also prevented. Now
in all, all the information we've had, we've gone through all types of perspectives. We're looking, we're Googling too. There's, what you're saying is there's no avenue legally anything until litigation is over and the Supreme Court makes a decision on the executive order.
Correct.
That could be two weeks, that could be four months.
Correct. It's, it's changing by the day, or could change by the day.
Yes, it does. Some of the, like even when we called this, when we called this meeting, it was a budget meeting. And I'm glad it was able to turn into an opportunity for this. And that was, even from last Friday, the information has changed. And so all that being taken into consideration, just so that we know the implications of legal clearly.
We published the board document, the board book, last Thursday for this meeting and then Thursday afternoon, there was a significant change in that is, we tried to outline that for you in this letter from, from Ms. Rossi Scott. But yes, there does not seem to be an avenue for local school boards or school districts to enact a, any kind of mask requirement while this plays out in the, in the legal system.
There've been districts looking for avenues to skim around it and nothing has worked for them. And so all that being taken into consideration, one, we're making our decisions. There's all kinds of things to consider. An opinion could, may have to be set aside.
The consensus of the, I've talked to a couple of different attorneys about this and is that it, they do not think it will be inordinately long before that is resolved in the legal system, but there's no specific timeline that's set.
One of the things that I've thought about as we sat here at this time, well, I guess a little bit before this time last year, was the model that was given to us about masks. We said, we're going to follow the law. And I, I keep coming back to that and the importance of it, because I, I'm torn both sides. I keep coming back to the fact that our, my basis of supporting the decision that was made last year, and it was upsetting to a lot of the folks in this room, was we're going to follow the law. And I think that sends a message to all of our community and our kids that that's what we're going to do. And so this year, it's flipped and so it's different. And it makes it a little tougher because I understand the importance of the safety and, but I'd still say we follow what we were told to do, to the extent that we still have local control of a lot of things. But right now, that is kind of where I'm at, is that we still, we follow, even if it's not a law that has been approved by our legislature, it's still a guidance by our governor. And, and I've been misquoted this week as far as, more concerned about the governor than I am the kids, and that is not the case one bit. But I think that we still have a responsibility to follow the law. And we don't get to pick and choose which ones, as a school board, that we tell you that we follow. I mean, it's just that we have to do that. We have to follow what the guidance and the law has set, set for us. So that's where I get stuck in this and that's where I'm at personally. I, I go, when one person talks this way, I hear it. I hear the, I hear the science. I believe that vaccinations are making an impact. That's not what we're talking about tonight. And, but that's, that's kind of where I'm at personally. I haven't had a chance to talk to any of you guys about that. That's just kind of was the basis for my decision last year, really to be consistent. And we were consistent all the way through. I've thought if we go with the mask mandate and how long does that last? I've heard several suggestions tonight, even from some of the healthcare workers, you know, it's not a, you know, forever suggestion to get through the, get through this spike in the cases. So, I mean, I'd be for, if we had to go that route, I would still even say I want it to be limited in a timeframe. I don't want to have, even if we were following a mask mandate, I don't want it to be just forever, because I felt like we kept it on too long last, last year and I wanted to see it. But we, we decided to stick together and finish the year out, talking to the staff and faculty that said, don't, don't disrupt what we've been doing. That's just kind of, and with this latest legal advice that we, we pay a lot of money to attorneys, one of the things that, that I've learned in sitting in this seat for the last six years is we spend a lot of money in legal fees. And it's, it's hideous to think of how much money is being spent in the legal system for our kids that could go to the education of our kids. And so I, the last thing I'd want to do is jump into something that would tie us up and take, take money from our kids. So that's, but I, I feel like we're stuck based, based on what's happened Friday, what's happened this morning, communication that we've got, we're stuck. It's unfortunate.
So, so how many children do we need to be infected before we take this seriously? Another 200? Another 150? Another 500? That's, that's my question. I mean, for one life worth, if we lose one child out of this epidemic, what if we gain one? And that's what I struggle with. I don't like wearing this stupid mask either. I just didn't take it off and I don't want my kids wearing it either. And I don't want my kids to be infected by someone else. We're going to have to take a stand here at some point and say, how many more kids do we need infected before we stop? Do we need to close the schools down? Is that what we're going to do? Then where do we go? So, you know, there's more serious things and that's the law. I mean, civil disobedience sometimes has to be done.
I think masks work. I'm not sure if cloth masks work, but N95s, but, and whether the governor has authority to issue the ruling. Right now, the Supreme Court of Texas says he does, so I don't see how. I mean, there's other ways, contact Stan Lambert or Don Buckingham, you know, go through other channels and get the governor to rescind his mask mandate where we could have that choice here. But I don't think we should go against the governor's order right now and then risk being sued and more legal costs.
Yeah, I agree. Mr. Goodman, I mean, you know, the, not having a mask mandate doesn't mean that students and staff can't wear masks. They have the freedom and the choice to wear those masks if they so choose. So the choice that everybody wants, if we mandate something, half the people are going to be for it, half the people are going to be against it. Choice is the, is the key there. Plus the fact that we would be going against the law, the governor's order. And so, yes, I'm, I'm not for a mask mandate. Child, student, put an N95 on them. They need to be wearing that regardless if we're in a pandemic or, or anything that would cause them to get ill. They have the freedom and you have the right as a parent to protect their health in N95. But, you know, you can get information off the, from whatever study that you want to match your view on this issue. get into the weeds on some, if, if they're available on, through contact tracing, if these children are getting infected at school or at home, I tend to think that they're getting infected at home. The spread seems to be minimal at the schools from some studies that I've looked at. And so therefore, it's once again on the parents to do whatever they want with their children. So there's many things that parents can do at home before they put their kid in that school to ensure that they are healthy and they're not being exposed to this variant at home, which means the parents, the other adults that are in their home, the people they come in contact with when they're not at school, everybody should be doing their part to ensure the safety of those children, not just when they're on the school campuses. And you have the right to, to put those masks on your children as well.
Dr. Young and Gus, how do you guys explain the, we, our, our policy is strongly recommended and our hope was that we would, we would get a much higher percentage of folks doing that, but even our own, even our own staff. How do you guys look at the survey that we did and knowing, you guys have all walked around campuses the first two weeks, of that difference of 53% of our faculty and staff wanting that and we're not seeing that? How did we?
So
I guess that's why I was asking the question.
How do you explain? I don't know that I have the answer to that question, but I can tell you what I've observed.
Yeah.
You heard Dr. V report, the results of the staff survey were 53% in favor of masks and 47% not. Had the opportunity in the last week to be in on every campus in our district at least once, several multiple times, in and out of lots of classrooms. And I can tell you just from an observational standpoint, did I count every one? Absolutely not. But I would tell you that our student mask percentage is somewhere, if you take the whole district as, as what you're looking at. I think we saw a couple of campuses where this number might have been higher, but I would say around 25% of our students or so is, are choosing to wear a mask at school. With the staff, the, the number is much lower. I would say less than 10%. And that's pretty consistent across all campuses. So that's, how do we explain that difference between the survey? I have no way to be able to answer that question, but I can tell you what I did observe.
I have a second.
There's a disconnect there.
Yeah. I do this. Let me explain. There is no doubt there is a fatigue for continuing to do this, having to do it again. And that certainly is something to be considered and yet the numbers, I'm sure we all hear the numbers and that makes us think twice. There are folks who answered this based on whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated and that they should or shouldn't for that, but.
Anybody else that would like to?
Well, I appreciate Mr. Enricus's comments on a couple of these issues here.
Danny, can you scoot up a little closer to the mic so everyone can hear you?
Yeah. I was just saying, I appreciate Mr. Enricus's comments on a few of the issues here tonight. When we went through the excluding the Delta variant on the COVID-19, we didn't look to our politicians for how to handle this. We didn't look to the governor, we didn't look to the legislature. We looked to our physicians. We asked them what they said and they told us. And the scientists went out and they did their homework and they created a vaccine. And that's what we need to do today. We need to look at our health and what they had to say to us. Do we want to protect our children? Of course we do. But our students, unfortunately, under peer pressure. So you send them to school with a mask on, with 75, 80% of them getting out of the car and wearing their mask, by the time they hit that door, we're hit that door, we're down to 20 or 10% wearing their mask. So, the probability of moving this variant, and maybe even the new variant that they're talking about, the Gamma variant, I mean, we're going to be in these issues for a long time, whether to wear the mask for a few weeks or half a year so that we don't end up shutting this down again. I think we have to at least entertain that conversation. You can sit in that chair and you can tell me not to wear the mask, but the day when we're standing there over your child and I see you on a ventilator and asking you to pull the plug, and you come back and you talk to everybody in this courtroom. I know this is a very touchy subject. Until you walk those shoes and you're in that hospital, when you walk in that hospital today, I am here to tell you, you have to put on the mask. And you have to put on a mask because those people in there depend on you to wear that mask.
You don't know that we're in a hospital.
That's right. We're not in a hospital, but we're in large segments.
I want to remind everyone that the conversation...
Is he? I apologize.
I'm going to remind Dr. V and I'm going to remind you guys.
And I apologize for that. But I think, talking back to Mr. Enricus, like I said at the beginning, I appreciate his comments there because we have to look at that. I mean, we really have to look at what we're dealing with here today. And who are you going to turn to when the governor tells you, "You have to wear the mask and we don't have that situation"? Then you're going to say, "The government's the bad boy." And so, I think here, we have to, somewhere along the line, we have to make a decision. What is the best for the kids?
Excuse me. Excuse me. The rules.
Sir, you've spoken.
You do have that right. Thank you. Again, I want to remind everybody, this, we opened this up for us to have this conversation at the board level. Again, thank you for honoring that. Continue to open up for comments.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that it might be a misconception that board members are always behind closed doors hashing these things out in advance. I've not spoken to one single board member prior to tonight about what we're going to discuss tonight or what we're going to decide. Okay? That's what this discussion is going on right now. This is our first time to discuss it as a group. Okay? So, there's been no behind closed doors collusion or anything like that. We're just, we're having the discussion as a school board right now. Once again, I want to go back to parents are the primary protectors, not the government or other groups with authority. So, there's things that I can do as a parent to protect my kids. Okay? Throw out the vaccine again. That is a proven method that has been shown to reduce the effects of COVID. And people will argue, "Well, now we've got these breakthrough cases." But correct me if I'm wrong, these breakthrough cases that occur with people that have been vaccinated that get infected again, the symptoms are much reduced. They're less than the unvaccinated. And most of the people that are in hospitals with COVID are the unvaccinated. So, if you are unvaccinated, you're a threat to your kids and sending them to school. There's things you can do as a parent because I would take, I would step in front of a car. If you were, if I was to ask any parent, this is not a question, the statement, "Would you take a bullet for your child? Would you step in front of a car for your child?" You better believe. So therefore, I would take a vaccine if I knew that that was going to protect my child. My father is in a nursing home. One of the primary reasons I got vaccinated was so I could see my father and not have any concern or little concern that I would infect any of those other residents that are in that nursing home. It's my responsibility to do everything I could to keep my father healthy. So, when I go in that nursing home to visit him, I'm putting a mask on. I'm completely vaccinated, but I don't want any risk of me introducing something that could jeopardize the health of all those other residents in that nursing home. Same thing with students in schools. I want to do everything I can as a parent. All my kids are out of AISD now. But I just want to point that out. If you'd take a bullet for your child, or if you're a teacher and you'd say, "You'd do anything for your students," well, that's something you could do to ensure their safety.
I think we have a responsibility as board members to protect these children. Now, I see these individuals out here. I don't see any of these individuals on a regular basis, but there's a lot of individuals that I see on a regular basis. They want their children protected. Their children are not wearing a mask because they feel like they're going to make fun of them. It's been mandated, not that we don't have to wear them. So, that's where those people are. They're waiting for someone to step up and say, "We have to do this for the safety of our children." We have that responsibility. I feel, you know, hello. And I'm not going to say I'm the only one to feel that because I know all, we all feel that. But sometimes we have to take bold moves. I may not be the best-luck person in this room, and I don't really give a, it doesn't matter whether I'm liked or disliked. What matters to me is that these children are safe and that they're not being infected. That's all that matters to me.
I completely agree with that. Everyone up here is in this seat because they want what's best for the students and the teachers. And not to vote to mandate masks on. We don't have the legal authority to do that. But I want to encourage and employ, and for everyone, to do everything within their power to keep your kids safe. And there's some proven things that can be done to ensure that.
A couple of thoughts that I had, and I just, this would really be for you and Cabinet and leadership on campus, the mandate was passed. And we know that it's not, that this interpretation right, this weekend, not legal. How difficult would it be for our staff and teachers to enforce it in the classroom? And how much of a burden would that be? What do you guys, do you have thoughts on that?
So, I'll field that one for our team. This is a complicated issue. I've had the opportunity to read all the case law that's out, or the majority of the prevailing case law that's out, to talk to multiple people with legal specializations and degrees, you know, to advise me on what this really means. And it's still hard to figure out. To think that every individual that comes into contact with somebody that may have a market opinion one way or the other on this topic is going to have that background is unreasonable. So I think, you know, we, if a parent sends their child to school, says they're not going to wear a mask and it's illegal, you know, then that puts the teacher in a place of conflict. It puts the principal in a place of conflict. And it is so complicated that it would be difficult to enforce at the campus level. That's just reality. Last year, we had, I mean, there was a statewide mask mandate. It was easy. We spent the majority of the school year in that boat. And still, that wasn't the easiest thing in the world then. But I think in the current paradigm, when we don't have, well, you asked a hypothetical question.
I did.
If we did have the standing to do it, what would it be like? And that's, that's my best guess, as we've talked about it as a team. It would certainly be a difficult situation for teachers and for campus staff if they came into folks that just, you know, came into contact with folks that didn't feel like they needed to comply for many of the reasons that we've heard tonight.
Dr. Young, is there a point, and Mr. Enricus asked, you know, what is, what is the number? What is, you know, we had a classroom today that you said we have to close. So, help us to see where you guys are at. What is that point?
Well, I think we will, we will get to a point where we, the resources that we have are going to be challenged to pull that off on a daily basis. We already, we've seen that as early as the third day of school last week, or the, as we started last week in our transportation department, when you have an inordinate number of bus drivers out, it becomes difficult to get kids to school on time. When you have an inordinate number of math teachers on campus, it gets hard to teach the quadratic formula, you know, and all of those things. And so, that's going to be the critical mass. And we don't have the benefit, there are some provisions in law for remote conferencing when students are home on quarantine, either due to being positive themselves or being close contacts. But the reality is, the same teacher can't provide the direct instruction to in-person students and the remote students, nor should they. We learned that lesson last year. The reality is, we don't have the staff to do that. We, on the first day of school, we were 10 teaching positions short of just staffing the in-person sections that we had in AISD. You know, and so, as we start to see the need for substitutes rise, you know, the same thing is happening in our substitute pool. It's happening in our employee pool. There are people that don't want to work or are not able to work, and you know, and so it's just going to become an increasingly difficult challenge. If we get to the point of where you are going to shut down, say, a whole school, as we've already seen in schools across the state in some places, certainly we'll probably be able to spin up remote instruction in those instances. I know that part of the governor's call for this second special session of the legislature is to deal with funding the remote instruction as it was funded last year. But that is not, I believe there's a version of that that passed the Senate last week that has come into a House Public Education meeting, their U. So, that's where we are. It's just, it's going to challenge us from a resource standpoint. And we already know that the academic cost of what we've been through to this point is significant. And just, we spend a lot of time trying to mitigate the learning loss that occurred in the first year and a half of this. And so, and I don't know that that answers your question, but it's going to be difficult to continue to staff. And there is a limit to what's practical.
Dr. Young, how successful was remote learning last year?
The failure rate for our remote learning students was very high, especially as we moved into the secondary, middle school and high school. The percentage of kids that were unsuccessful in remote learning was very, very high, upwards of 75%, if I remember right. It's been a while since I went through the heroic effort of some folks in summer school and working through some things. We've been able to make great placement decisions and things like that to try to catch kids up. You know, last year was, was hard with remote learning. We were shut down nine weeks prior to the end of the previous school year. And so now, you know, it's going to take multiple years to close those gaps.
So, what was the percentage of students that failed one or more classes?
Oh, I'd have to, I haven't looked at that data recently. It was, it was 60-plus percent, if you take K through 12.
The class was stayed home.
Was higher than that.
The class was stayed home. That's what we're headed for, if we continue to take on what we're doing right now?
Well, I, I'm not 100% sure. You know, if we, if we save the entire district, learning differently, you would not, you would probably, I believe, we would have the ability to send teachers to school so that they have their, their materials and their technology and all that, and the kids could learn at home. I think we would be able to do it differently. Part of the difficulty last year was you had teachers that were, were almost all split in terms of having a certain number of students in front of them in person. They might have 17 kids in the classroom in front of them, and then another seven that were remote learners. And that's, that's not a tenable circumstance for even our very best teachers. It's difficult to test.
Do you see a situation where we would get to, I'll just use an elementary A, where we had to close several classrooms. We continue to ask, strongly recommend, "Please help us wear masks." Do you think, do you think we got it in us as a community, that parents and kids, that we could, we could overcome that? If you believe that masks are making a difference and know that, do we have that? Do we have that in us?
I don't know. That's not a question I can answer for our community. We, I believe that we, as we started school, we took the strongest stance possible under existing law. And that was to strongly recommend that students and staff wear masks at school. And in the session, we see the participation at the levels I described to you earlier. You know, if we get to the point where we're having to close campuses and things like that, would that improve? I don't know. I can tell you, I spoke with another superintendent, I'll just say, anywhere ISD earlier today, and as I, who recently had to close an elementary school completely. And, and his comment to me was that it really was the staff numbers of people that they were losing to testing positive and quarantining rather than the student numbers. And that's, and he just did not have the staff to operate the school and had to close it. And I, I fear that that's, that's a boat that we could end up in.
All right. Here's another out-of-left-field comment. Are there certain situations where school administrators, campus administrators, a requirement for masking, let's say, for example, at the high school level, in order to attend a pep rally, you know, it's got to be, everybody there in attendance needs to be masked, just because that's, I don't know if that's considered extracurricular or not, but what's your thoughts on that? Would that be, is that potentially an option?
So, the, the rules apply consistently to all school activities. A pep rally is an interesting example in that we do those before school. We've changed a lot of things about how we do those things in an effort to provide the opportunity for kids to participate. Last year, we didn't do pep rallies at all.
Right.
This year, in an effort to get to do them, we're doing them outside, you know, where we can spread out, where we, you know, because we could not put a requirement on. The only instance, in answer to your question, where I feel like we do have the authority would be our medically fragile students that receive special education services because that's where your federal law would trump even the school. So, we do have some flexibility there. That's the only area that we're getting this done.
As the only one who hasn't spoken, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows, I feel a great, all of the kids in the district. I have been able the last few days to spend some time with our youngest students, helping them out. And that's because of their age, that's a lot of closer proximity. And if it was felt that it was necessary that I mask up, I would be glad to. I asked before I came I asked before I came in, and it was told it was still a choice. I did not make that choice. I plan on going back in two or three weeks to work within, this time I will be masked because they are the ones that don't have a choice about getting the vaccine. They don't have a choice, and it's hard for them. I understand that. It's not a, it's not a party for me, but it's easier for me to do it than it is for them. So I will make that change because I feel a sense of, I need to do that. I guess I'm, what I feel like is if everybody would just think real hard about the sense of responsibility of themselves or their children being around the others in the district, and just, just take it to a more personal level.
Fragile students and those with other comorbidities, how they're distributed through our district? They tend to be, well, the medically fragile tend to be concentrated in specialized classrooms. That's not to say that everyone who is medically fragile is in that situation, but we have a good many students that are, whether it, depending on what those needs are, they're in specialized programs. For the other comorbid, you know, you can't tell by looking at anybody.
I mean, they're holding their campuses or, or.
Yes, no, no, they are, and spread throughout the district.
Basically, they're throughout our campuses.
But they're probably in a self-contained environment on those campuses.
Self-contained, what's that?
In that they're, they're.
They're in a room, but they still go through the hallways.
They still go through the hallways, they still go to cafeteria.
What we do during lunch is, are they mingled with our other students?
I have a kid with cancer, and she won't like the rest of the day.
It's, it's going to depend what, what the program calls for, so, you know, a separate time. There are individuals that are in, you know, we have no way of knowing what do all meet the definition of medically fragile. There are, there are some that require specialized programming, some that don't. And so they're, they're maybe in a, in a general classroom also. I'm thinking of some specialized, special ed programs, but that's not all of our kids that are in that situation.
So the exposure is there for them. We're not isolating them in the sense of setting them off in a different building or a different structure, and making sure they have no contact with other students. So we, we basically, they're in the general population, so to speak, but we, we still have to be aware that we do have fragile students on every campus.
That's, that's true, and Ms. Rossisky does address that in this last page, I think it was on the last page of her updated letter about, or second to the last page in the top paragraph. She provides a little more background there, but.
Any other questions, any other discussions?
So are, are our staff mandated handling their students, are they mandated to wear masks, or, I thought was that?
We are in the process of working, that is one area, you know, this is changing all the time. We just got that, I mean, just with last Thursday's court action, it, it is no longer possible for school districts to require all staff, all students. I believe the, the legal framework is clear there. This does seem to be one area where we can make an adjustment, and so we are, are looking at how to do that. So I believe many of those, or solely with those students, are choosing to wear face masks because they, they know that situation, but there's not a requirement in place currently.
Well, to me, that, that seems a situation that would be a no-brainer, that we would want the, the staff and the, and the, everyone that's involved with providing the, that's coming in, providing those resources for these medically fragile, section 504, students to, to be masked, and provide, and, and provide the materials for them to be masked. Now, does that mean that the entire time they're on the campus, that, that they're going to be around other people that are, that are masked? No, as, as it was just described, if they've got to go through the hallways, or if they've got to go to the cafeteria, that's, that's just not plausible. But on the one-on-one instruction and, and in situations like that, it would make sense, in which I'm sure it is occurring, I hope that, that those teachers and staff are masked around these medically fragile students.
We will continue to take the guidance offered by, that, that is available to us when dealing with students in those situations.
Sure.
I want to go on record as strongly disagreeing with the vote, I'd say, but I think, I think the decision he has made is going to burn far and short.
I am sensing that we are not anywhere close to making any kind of action, doing any kind of action on this item. Am I wrong in assuming that? We can release our audience and move on to the next item, or you guys want to continue to discuss this?
Well, I don't want to table it to some other day, or month, or week. I mean, let's, let's strike a lot of iron hot. We've all got opinions, we've all got, our minds made up. If you don't, well, I, I'd like to, if we can, if there's the ability to make a decision. I don't want this hanging over, I don't want my inbox getting blown up, you know, for the next, until we make a decision. Again, I'd like to, I'd like to be proactive. Sure, I'll make a motion.
Well, there's nothing on the table, there's.
Is it on the agenda that we could make a?
Yes, it is, that's what, that's, that's, action can be considered, that's why it's on the agenda.
Let's see, okay, I'll try and work this. I'd like to make a, a motion that the AISD does not mandate masking or face coverings in the protocols in Abilene ISD.
So your motion is to not mandate?
That's right, not mandate wearing of masks or face covers.
Which is the current?
Well, is there a need to have a vote if we're not changing anything?
Yeah.
Non-action would mean we stay where we are.
That's, so you don't need to make a motion?
Great, I just want to, as a point of emphasis, then, that this is.
Just like Billy did about the governor.
Yes, that if, if there's no action, then there's no need to continue to, to.
That was my question.
Have it hanging out there, that, that our inaction is affirming, affirming the, the governor's stance.
So I can make a motion to say that we need to mask up?
Yep.
And have it on the agenda? So I make that motion to mask up?
Two motions.
Well, that's before, I did not, I felt like you stopped before you actually made a motion, but.
I will withdraw my motion for not mandating masking in the AISD. How's that?
That's fine, that's fine. So, so Billy, you have, there is a motion to approve adding mask and face covering or farmer protocol to the ISD 2021-22 health and safety protocols. Motion's been made by Mr. Enricus. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? We have time for discussion. One motion's been made, and second, we have time for discussion.
So in regards to discussion, I mean, it's clear that, it's not perfectly clear, but relatively clear that we would be going against the governor's mandate, and I think it's perfect, not perfectly clear, but it's clear that that would be a precedent that would be struck down in the courts. So, there you go.
Other comment?
I, I don't think I could vote to put our district in a position of not following the law. I, I would be considering abstaining. I can't vote against what I believe, and I can't run again, and I can't put a district in that position.
So don't get me wrong.
I would be considering abstaining.
Abstaining?
I can't vote against what I believe, and I do not want to put our district in that position of going against the law.
Any other comment? All right, there being no further comment, we have a motion by Mr. Enricus, seconded by Dr. Wheat. Thank you. I thought it came from this side, it's over here. We will now take a roll call vote. Andrew Wiley.
Abstaining.
Derek Hood.
No.
Billy Enricus.
Yes.
Danny Wheat.
Yes.
Rodney Goodwood.
No.
Daryl Zeller, no. Cindy Earls.
Will abstain.
Okay. Three, two, two, the motion. Folks, I, I, again, I want to just thank you for being here, and I know this is a very encouraging to come back. I have a feeling that this isn't the end of, of COVID. I wish we, I never would have dreamed that we got, we would be here on, having this discussion again, and I really hoped that we wouldn't starting out the year, so, again, I want to thank the community of Abilene for all the input. I encourage you to stay involved. We've got a lot of work to do to educate some kids and to catch these kids back up where we, what we've lost in the last eighteen months. So I want your passion, and so I thank you for being here. We're going to take a five-minute break, just to allow that anybody that needs to step out to do so, and good, thank you for being here.
I'm not afraid of that. Angie.
I have a call.
This is purpose.
And I got the feeling, and I looked over at you.
This is purpose.
I'd like to, ask everyone to kind of come back, we've had our five-minute break, I think everybody that's left has had an opportunity to do so. Thank you.